I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. And, Roberta, would you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah.
Supervisor Parks.
Yeah.
Supervisor Foye.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bennett.
Here. Do we have anybody here for public comments? All right, we don't, and so we'll go right to our item, and that's the status report from Fire Chief Bob Roper and Bob Brooks regarding the Coberton Fire, and then our declaration will be the next item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Ms. Robinson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Fire Protection District. Up on the screen what you have is an update as of this morning. The fire, the Guyerson Fire, started on Monday about 10:30 in the morning in the area of some mulch piles on a ranch off of Guyerson Road. Today, the fire is at about 17,500 acres, 75 percent contained. We're expecting full containment tomorrow. And just so you understand, containment is when we get a line around the fire. The actual words we use, "control," comes days later when we put out all the hot spots on the inside. But once we get a line around the fire, we start releasing a lot of equipment, and the imminent threat is gone at that time. Today, there's about 200 fire engines. There was up to 300 at one time. The fire crews, bulldozers. Today, there was only 10 helicopters. We had up to 14, including the Sheriff's Aviation Fleet there. Today, there was only two fixed wing that was making isolated drops, but we had up to eight on the ongoing days. Today, it's down to 2,000 personnel. Yesterday, we had 2,800 personnel. So, there's always this point in time when we order resources and getting everybody on the road as we're making progress. There's a day that the progress is made, but everybody's still on the road, and so we just get them turned around and getting them, sending back home. But we had resources from the Shasta-Trinity area in Northern California, from all over the state. There was nine injuries, all really minor. There was no actual residences damaged or lost during the fire. We did have one outbuilding that was confirmed, and I noticed there was in, one of the residents said he lost two vehicles worth about $75 apiece or something, was in the newspaper article. The projected costs when we get done will be about $7.5 million, and this will be offset by the Fire Management Assistant Grant, the federal dollars, and also by the state declaration. Just to orientate you on the fire itself, this is Fillmore here, Moore Park's here, Simi Valley's over here, South Mountain, and then you have Balcom Canyon here, and then right through the middle is Grimes Canyon. The fire started about in this area of Guyerson. With the east wind conditions that were going, it started moving the fire up and across. And as it got through there, crews thought they could hold it at Grimes, but we've never been able to hold the fire at Grimes because it's a mid-slope highway, and everybody thought, "Well, there's not much fuel up there," which there really isn't, because it was recently burnt in 2003 and 2005. The problem is, they're light flashy fuels, and when they're light flashy fuels, they're subject to that Santa Ana wind condition, draws all the moisture out of it, and it doesn't take anything to get even small amount of fuel to burn. One of the bigger challenges for the aviation fleet was these purple lines are Southern California Edison's main transmission lines. These run from Orman and Mandalay Beach going out to Santa Clarita, and what happens during this area is when the smoke goes up, the smoke will get onto the lines, and when that happens, sometimes it'll groundfall across the insulators down to a ground. This causes major problems for Edison because they have to shut down lines, and so Edison was out there with their high-pressure truck spraying the lines to keep the smoke off of them. The other danger we had was along Guyerson, we have a lot of oil fields, and the Southern Californian gas has a 36-inch major gas line that runs through the area. So, we have them working with us as resource advisors because we had to cross the gas company line several times with our bulldozers, so they have to spot it to make sure that we don't do any damage along the way. So, it's a coordinated effort there. Things that worked well on this fire, and it's nice to be able to have this today because basically the fire's taken care of at this point, but things that worked well was around the homes, the people abided by our defensible space measures, and that's why we contribute a lot, no structure loss. The other thing that may not sound right, but the CEO was with me in the helicopter ride the other day, from the air, very visible, the grazing practices that are incurred out there. The fire stops right along all the fence bobline, bobwire fence lines. This is because on one side it's grazed and the other side it isn't. So, when it gets to the area that's grazed, the fire goes out. This works extremely well when we don't have much wind, but other times when we have a 70 mile an hour wind, it will still even go across those areas, but this is very evident. The other thing is that the new program we implemented is ready, set, go, trying to get the people to do things and listen to the evacuation warnings. Even though it's only been done for about a year, we're trying to see the language, the vocabulary, that people are understanding the message, and we hope in the future years that it will get even better. The agency coordination between all the entities on the fire was extremely well, from the mutual aid that came in to also with our law enforcement partners dealing with the repopulation and road closures and stuff. These are two areas that we continue to try to work on to improve life for the residences. We had the only real major fire in California, and so that allowed us to have as many resources as we could order, and it was just a matter of time of getting them there. So, unlike other fires we've had on this fire, this may sound odd, but we have, when I drove around, I had many residents say, "It's nice to see you hear this fire," and what they meant was, along at the interior ranches and stuff, when we have a 70 mile an hour wind going, we can only get to the outside if we can even get there, and a lot of stuff in the interior we can't get to, and that's part of the ready, set, go program. We're trying to tell people under adverse wind conditions, "Your house better stand by itself because we can't, we can't outrace the wind," type of thing. The other thing was, is the lack of wind, as well as the aggressive firefighting that went on. The areas that we see that we still need to work on is with the public is the public situational awareness of a wildfire situation and a complacency issue. Numerous people were talking about, "Well, I decided to say there wasn't much wind. We've been through this before, and last time I evacuated, but there wasn't enough wind, so I'm staying." Well, the problem we're having with the public is that every wildfire is different. We have the same issue with our firefighters. From a safety concern, they get complacent because it wasn't a real wind-driven event, but every so often the wind would kick up, and that's when we could have a major fire front come and trap somebody. The other thing is intelligence and public information. Today, we're partnering with a company out in Simi Valley that we've been developing a relationship. They're flying unmanned aerial vehicles on both sides of the fire during different times, and we're trying to get live video downlinks to the command center, and ultimately, we'd like to get that live video link into the county's EOC, as well as the city's EOCs. So, we're using DOD technology now to try to do that, because if we can get that intelligence, then we can update our webpages so that people don't have to shop around and listen to blogs. They can go to the sheriff and our websites to have accurate update information. So, the other thing we continue to run in with the agricultural community is I brought in Henry Gonzalez and John Criss from the Farm Bureau, is we have the ongoing issues that we found in 2005 with mulch issues around the agricultural community. As embers get into those mulch piles, it's harder to extinguish and so forth. We also are working with the ag community on how to improve the use of these agricultural passes that the sheriff and I created to try to allow some of their non-resident farm workers and managers to get in the area, as well as, we still need to try to get the agricultural community to utilize defensible space measures among their crops to help save their crops, to lessen the damage there. The last slide I just want to show you is, as we talk about the fire danger on this fire, is also coming up to this next week, Thursday and Friday, another Santa Ana condition is coming. You'll see this green line here is the 10-year average of what we collect as live fuel moistures. The other squiggly lines, we take live fuel moistures from different areas in the county. This is what we take is the fuels, we dry them out, and we figure the difference of how much moisture was in them. The amount of moisture that's in them equates to their degree of flammability, I'll put it, okay? So, on an average, this is where we are today. You can see where the red line is the critical line at 60 percent. We're already below that, and earlier this year, we've been going about two months ahead of schedule as far as being dry, and so this just gives you an indication of the danger if a fire was to occur. The amount of fire activity could be quite high going into the fall. So, we're looking at today is beginning our transition and full containment of the fire tomorrow. We will be transitioning with the CAL FIRE Incident Command Team that we jointly staff on Sunday, and then the fire will be turned completely back over to our county resources, and all of our friends from outside the county will be going home on Monday. So, and I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Okay. Sheriff Brooks?
Good afternoon, members of the Board, and this is Robinson. I want to begin by complimenting the chief and the fire department for the great job that they do managing these kinds of incidences, and the more that we work together as a county, not just, not just fire and sheriff, but all of the county agencies that participate and train together during the year, the more effective we become, and we see improvements and innovation every time that we go through one of these, one of these incidents. Giving you a little bit of a chronology, at 10:50 in the morning on Tuesday, the 22nd, our duty officer in the Office of Emergency Services noted the fire response to a column of smoke near Fillmore. They notified the watch commander right away and received a report that Copter 6 and Air 9 have been dispatched, along with a air tanker had been requested. By 11:30, the fire chief, or the police chief of Fillmore, one of our captains expressed a concern that the fire was close to the areas of Grimes Canyon, Shekel, and Fruitvale, and prepared our frank units to conduct evacuations in the area. By 11:40, the county's emergency operations center was raised to a Level 1 staffing, the minimum staffing level. We also sent agency representatives to the incident command post established at a Royal Vista Park in Moore Park. Notifications were made to EOC members using reverse 911. That's another feature of 911, you know, we don't talk about quite as much, but pulling out staff deployments through reverse 911, you know, takes the burden off of personnel making all these calls, trying to draw people in. It's very effective. Other notifications were made to CAL EMA, American Red Cross, Ventura County Animal Regulation, and our emergency volunteer rescue team was very helpful in assisting staff with conducting those kind of notifications. American Red Cross, as they always do, was very quick in responding. By 12:30, they had begun to staff shelters at the Global Senior Center, the Sycamore Drive Community Center in Simi Valley, and the Santa Paula Community Center. We only had two homeless people walk into the centers, but you never know what you're going to get, and you always have to be prepared for that, and they have maintained a continual 24-hour hotline for anyone else that needed additional assistance. Animal Regulation did a, did a great job, they always do, on these wildland fires. 210 horses and a variety of every menagerie of animal you could ever think of had to be housed in local shelters. Larger animals go into the county fairgrounds. We invoked mutual aid with Santa Barbara to use the Earl Warren Showgrounds to handle the overflow of horses and large animals. And Ventura County Air Pollution District also was effective in giving out quality of air advisories and maintaining current information on air quality. As we take a look at the response to this, our EOC is continually occupied with more and more agency representatives. The CEO and other agency heads have delegated staff. That was very, very helpful to us in order to maintain the same level of service. I also want to give credit to the CHP and County Public Works in helping us with road closures, taking care of a lot of our traffic mitigation issues. But the, the changes are primarily on the technology side. We have, we have fewer people to respond to these incidents, but we have more effective technology, and we try to offset the lack of staff with, with taking advantage of the latest. Some of, some of you have been using some of the things that are more recent, but to give you some numbers of what's making a difference, reverse 911, we made 3,600 phone calls with reverse 911, issuing evacuation notices, providing updated information to residents. That's becoming a larger part of our public information response every time that we use it. We also have a Farm Watch internet system. It's basically an electronic neighborhood watch in our, in our agricultural communities. Right now, we have 425 farmers and ranchers in the Fillmore area, and about 30 percent of the farmers and ranchers in the Santa Paula area that are signed on to Farm Watch. And that was another way of getting information to them, preventive information, information about evacuations, road closures, access to their fields, all of those things on a, on a frequent basis as soon as things changed. We have a hotline in EOC. We received about 260 calls that we logged every day. We received many more calls, but not all of them are registered. Web EOC, we have practiced with this. This is an internet-based communication program for emergencies that allows us to track multiple location emergencies all at the same time, tracking all of our resources, our responses, information coming in from the field, from PIOs, from incident managers, from anyone that, that has the ability to input, which is almost everybody working the incident. All comes to one central location in EOC. But the, the advantage of that for you as elected officials and for our operational folks is everyone that's granted access can have all of the information coming into a central focus point as soon as it's developed. You don't have to wait for a briefing. You don't have to wait for a PIO to put together a report to disseminate to staff or to the public. It goes to everyone at once. As soon as the incident commander knows, you know, and you can log on from your website. You can log on from a BlackBerry. All of the people that used to have to be in EOC to stay up to speed can be anywhere they want to be. They can be out in the field. They can be with the community. They can be with their constituents, and they can have all of the information that we have. Right now, we've trained 163 users. There's online training available to you and your staffs and everyone that has access. Much of this can go to the public, but there are levels of access that are, that are restricted, and, and obviously those are available for all the county, county participants in that kind of an event. We found it's changing the way that we communicate. We were very fortunate to get this program. It was made possible by the donation from one of our volunteers who just felt that we would do a better job if we had it, and she took on that burden, and we're very grateful to her. Another thing that's been part of what we're doing now is using social internet websites, not dating websites, but social internet websites, and what we used to do is have a webpage, and you could come on and you could log on to the webpage for information that would be updated periodically. Now, our PIOs in the field log right to Twitter or Nixal, and our link on our website is to those social internet websites. So, the public can go on by just registering on either one of those. On Twitter alone, we have 845 registered people, probably at least as many people on Nixal, and they get noticed on their phone if there's, if there's activity, or they can register and check on to see what's coming out of our agencies and watch it minute by minute. As information develops, it's scrolling onto, onto that website, so you could do the same thing from your office, and you have instant information as soon as anyone in our operations center knows or any of our PIOs update it. So, that's Web EOC we've practiced with, but we've never used. We're glad they can kind of have a reasonably sized fire emergency to deal with so that we could try it under, under difficult conditions and see how it works. It worked clearly up to our expectations, and now we'll extend the training to as many people as are interested. But with all the technical, technology, you're still going door-to-door. You're still closing areas. You're still knocking and noticing, and we used our, our technical response team and our search and rescue personnel, and we had a team of 10 deputies working under the supervision of a sergeant around the clock, under the direction of fire in terms of where evacuations needed to occur. We had 27 search and rescue personnel that stayed with us for two and a half days, donated 140 hours of time. The teamwork of volunteers and deputies make it possible. We couldn't have possibly done that with just sworn personnel. Our air unit flew 109 missions over 23 hours of flight time. 40,000 gallons of water dropped, and one hoist rescue. They were, I was out there at the hangar yesterday. They were all tired and hot and dirty, but they were, they were continuing to work. Incident costs have been relatively nominal for us. Our overtime cost, as of this, there's still some trickling in, was $12,000. We used a lot of people that were on duty, pulling them out of other assignments to, to minimize cost, and so although we're included, you know, potentially for reimbursements, it's a very small amount at this point. Disaster assistance, we received the state emergency declaration from the governor on Tuesday, and I'm asking your board to ratify the emergency declaration that I signed at the beginning of this incident. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have questions from the Board for either the sheriff or the fire chief? Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank you and Chief Roper for doing an excellent job, you know, your staff and your safety personnel for, you know, for your outstanding efforts in protecting the land and property over in the, in that fire area in the Fillmore and Moore Park area. And also want to thank your staff, because we just got the training in the EOC, and she did an excellent job, you know, in training my staff to, to look into the internet. And we were watching the fire, and as you were sharing about road closures and shelters, and that was excellent information that we were looking at, and actually you had some pictures of the actual fire, too, that we were watching on, on the computer. So, the young lady did a really good job in training us, and also in the, in the CEO's office, Kristy was doing an excellent job, Manning the, the command center, and sent us some emails, and, and I just want to thank you for the good work, you know, both sheriff and chief here, and your personnel for doing an excellent job, and I think.
Well, thank you, and there's a lot of credit to be passed around. Kristy Madden was working the liaison frequently, and what we found with the agency participants outside of public safety that work in the EOC, they're now building up enough experience that they're really, really good at what they do, and so building that team and a bench strength that you can, you know, right now, this lasted a couple of days, but if it went a week or two weeks and you had a really prolonged incident, we would need all of those trained personnel coming on.
All I did, all I did was go over to my favorites, and there it was.
Good.
Supervisor. Certainly to just thank you and all the troops for the excellent work at, attending the briefing the other day. The tinderbox conditions were truly that. It was unbearably hot, and Chief Roper spoke to the fact that not having high winds has certainly helped, but in another way, it, it caused its own problems. I, I think using all of the social networks and opportunities we can to provide the public access to information and timely information goes a long way, and, and, you know, certainly working on that complacency issue and public information fees, we'll have to continue to do that. The Farm Watch has just been a tremendous tool. Of course, it covers all of the Santa Clara Valley, so I get it on a regular basis, and it's just, I know the folks who have registered with it appreciate it. I hear from them all the time about just having that communication, and of course, during this incident, it was noted that there was deep appreciation to the agricultural community for assisting with access to their roads and identifying areas for intersection and, and, you know, work to, workers to be able to get access in. So, I'm sure they'll be very cooperative in looking at the next steps to, you know, what can we do to address mulching or whatever, whatever the issues may be after you finish the investigation on the, on the origins of the fire, and I, the Farm Watch, Captain Hagel does an excellent job with that. So, thank you all. I'm certainly happy to hear that the injuries weren't serious and, and all have fared okay through this, and it's been unbearably hot out there, still is.
Supervisor Foye.
Thank you. It's always impressive when you get to go to your, you know, the command center there and see all the people working together. I always get impressed that there's so many of these big agencies, everybody coming together, and the Eagles are thrown out the, out the door, and everybody works well together. One of the things that was great to hear, though, from CAL FIRE, was that it's really, in a sense, when fires happen, it's enjoyable to come to Ventura County, they said, because we do such a good job with defensible space. We've taken that very serious compared to what's happening when they go to Santa Barbara County and some of these other counties that don't do that. So, it's great. I mean, they feel like they're protecting their own guys, and what we've done in the oil, you know, areas, they've done a tremendous job. That's really good. The other thing that was very impressive, and I think is responsive to the citizens, is when they're called out of their homes because of evacuations, it looks like they're looking hourly how we can get them back. looking hourly how we can get them back. I know they said sometimes it'd been days, oh, we forgot to call these people back, but that was great, where people, you know, don't want to be out of their homes, and I think a lot of the reasons people don't leave is because they know if I leave, I can't get back. And the idea that you're working so hard to make sure that people can get back early, I think will be better in the future. So it was just great to see it all, and your PIO officers were great. You come over, a lot of information, it was great. So it's just very impressive to watch it all happen. Thanks.
And one point that we might want to cover just for your information because we had requests, when people want to be, you know, allowed to go back to their homes, there's a 12-point management team checklist that they have to go through. It's not just fire and sheriff saying it's safe. Edison has to agree, Gas has to agree, everybody that has an interest in the area or needs access to it has to agree before the team will go ahead and open that up. So they might look at it as as simple as, "Fire's burned through, there's no fuel here, it's safe for me to go home." There are all kinds of reasons why they can't do that at that point, and not until the whole team buys off on the safety of the area can you do that.
Supervisor Parks.
Again, I also want to thank you for your effort, and I just really realize as we go through these fire events how much it is weather-dependent, a lot of these, and we're fortunate, I think, this time. I also know that there's a lot of citizens out there that would love to be able to assist in some way. I don't know if we can expand arson watch, for example, and use some of our fire-safe councils or things that citizens can do to assist. Leave that to you.
Thank you.
It's certainly on behalf of the board and Ventura County residents, just another classic textbook example of our response, and I think this one was scalable enough that it, as you said, we didn't have to go down into the bench too deep, and we ended up here. But the sense that I got from the very beginning was, it was just, you know, the game plan was put into effect, you know, bing, bing, bing. It just felt very coordinated, and that's very reassuring for the citizens of Ventura County. And so thank you for the cooperation between your, the leadership that the two of you have to show, because that filters down to everybody else in terms of the cooperation out there, and we really appreciate it. It's served us well this time, but it's served us well overall tremendously with these things. With that.
Let me also thank the board for your support of all of our efforts for prevention and planning and our disaster council and the things we do all year long. You know, I know Laura and her team keep pushing us to train, and all of it pays off at times like this, and without your support, that wouldn't happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Foy.
And I know from our standpoint up here, as budgets get tight, it's difficult as we struggle between public safety, you know, both of your organizations of budgets and trying to keep enough people, and there's no question. I saw some of the issues where before you could have done different things if you had more people, but you didn't, and, but during these times, it's going to be a struggle for all of us to try to figure out how to continue to fund you enough that protects the public in tough times.
All right, we'll take a motion to receive and file this oral report. It's moved and seconded. We're ready to vote on that. Okay, and then we have item five, which is the actual ratification and approval of the proclamation of a local emergency. That's passed. A motion has been made and seconded, and we're ready to vote. And the local emergency has been declared. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our meeting is adjourned, right?